All right, welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council. This is a special meeting for our fiscal year 2324 budget review. It's May 25th and I know Ms. Kelsey Harris has the prayer and the pledge for our meeting, but if you will just bow with me quick, we'll start by prayer and then we'll do a apply pledge allegiance. Father, thank you for this chance that we get to assemble again. Give us wisdom, Lord, give us direction. Thank you for our staff who've worked so hard on all of these budgets to provide better services for the city of Murfreesboro. Bless this time and this chance we're together in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Craig, we'll turn over the show to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. We're presenting this evening the FY24 budget of the city. The total budget's $573 million this coming fiscal year. It has three major components, of course, the general fund, which most of the city operates on, also city schools, and then the Water Resources Department and Enterprise Fund of the city that is self-supporting. Each of those will be presented separately. The general fund budget this year is about $293 million. Revenues equal expenses. It's a balanced budget with a small contribution to the general fund balance. From a revenue standpoint, we've made very conservative estimates, given the general economic conditions that we're faced with right now. It's about 6% over FY23, including federal grants and one-time revenue. No tax increase is recommended for this year. There is a recommendation of an increase in the solid waste collection fee of $2 per month for residential, $5 for commercial, except the city sitter core. That's consistent with an eight-year plan that's been developed to make the solid waste utility into a self-supporting utility fund. Expenses, we've made a great effort to minimize those from any significant increases as much as possible. Of course, there are the inflationary effects, as alluded to earlier, that create a general economic condition that we do have to adjust for, but we will continually monitor those during the year. And with respect to expenses, one-time revenue is allocated very carefully to one-time expenses so we don't face issues in the future. Your budget materials details how the budget addresses council priorities, and the budget is consistent with council's adopted financial policies. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Tucker, our budget director, who will take us through a little bit more detailed presentation, and of course then we'll take recommendations and answer any questions.
Thank you. So today's review includes snapshots of key revenues and expenses with a comparison to this year's budget and next year's proposed budget. Just a few budget highlights, kind of repeating what Craig just covered. Recurring operating revenues and expenses are projected at $238 million, with one-time revenues and expenses totaling close to $18 million. We're also budgeting to use about $5 million in assigned fund balance and are projecting a little over $12 million in carryforward items. The MED proceeds and community investment transfers are also included in next year's budget. Next, we'll take a look at the major revenues and then review expenses. So starting with major revenues, here's a look at property tax. This chart shows this year's budget, where we project this year to fall out, and next year's budget. Next year's budget uses about 2.6% growth over this year's projection, and like Craig said, does not include a property tax rate increase. This is a little under what we showed for FY23 in growth, but I feel comfortable with that growth based on numbers we received from Rob Mitchell's office. With uncertainties surrounding local sales tax, we're projecting to come in under budget this year and are keeping next year's budget flat with this year's budget. Last year, we saw anywhere from 8 to 27% growth on our monthly receipts, which carried forward this year with 8 to 12% growth through December. Starting in January, that growth really dropped significantly, and May receipts actually showed a slight decline from last year, which is the first time we've seen a decline since 2020. We'll continue to monitor this revenue each month and keep council updated through your dashboard, and if we see anything significant, we'll email and let you know that as well. Growth in state shared sales taxes also slowed, but not quite as dramatically as local. Based on this, we're expecting to meet this year's budget and are projecting 2.5% growth for next year. Again, we'll closely monitor this each month and notify y'all of any significant variances. So now that the Community Investment Trust has been established, we need to budget for the MED proceeds and the transfer to the trust. We're also budgeting the trust distributions that are expected to come back to the general fund. Of the 17 million in proceeds from MTE, a little over 10 will go directly to the trust. The remaining seven is left in general fund, with five going to roads. Two will stay in general fund to replace the MED pilot that went away, and $250,000 to recreation. We also budgeted the 2.2 million trust distribution, but that's not yet been allocated. So the solid waste fee has not increased since FY20. At this month's workshop, Mr. Gore presented an eight-year plan to move solid waste to that full cost recovery model that we've been working towards. Last week, council approved the scheduled rate increase of the $2 per month for residential and $5 for commercial that Craig just spoke of. That overall impact moves solid waste closer to full cost recovery by around 1.4 million. Here's a look at all of our other revenues. Generally, these are staying relatively flat with a few exceptions primarily related to our grants, both recurring, like transportation, Rover, and community development, and also our one-time grant with ARPA funds. Before I move into expenditures, are there any questions on revenues? Okay, so here's a look at total expenditures by division. Police and fire make up a combined 29% of our budget, with other governmental, which includes the transfer to debt service and to city schools, following with 24%. Public infrastructure makes up 15% of the budget, and that includes transportation and engineering and state street aid-related expenses. Community services includes parks, golf, communications, and community development, and that makes up 12% of the budget. The remaining 20% consists of admin, internal services, public works, and development Moving into our supplemental requests, supplemental requests came in a little over $8 million this year. Payroll-related increase topped those requests at 47%, with public safety, positions, and other supplementals combining to another 11%. Grant-funded request total around 19 to 20%. And then we had one-time capital expenditures of about $450,000 that we're proposing to move out of general fund into the other capital sources fund, which I'll discuss in more detail in a little while. If y'all have any questions, feel free to stop me at any time. So starting with the grant-funded supplementals, when we received the departmental submissions, we identified about $350,000 in ARPA-eligible items for police, fire, and parks. We also had unused grant funds from last year that we were able to identify non-recurring expenses for next year totaling around 1.2 million. Because we're matching those non-recurring revenues to non-recurring expenses, normal operating expenses are not included in this category, and these are listed as your priority zero items on your supplemental sheets. This chart shows how headcount has been impacted the last five years. This year's headcount is going up relatively small compared to previous years with about a 1.5% increase. However, from FY20 to FY24, we're showing an increase of around 11% overall. 68 to 70% of these increases are for public safety. I also want to point out that the budget includes an allowance for vacancies of 7.5% for police salaries and benefits. If our recruitment and retention efforts improve, we may need to bring back a budget amendment to increase the police payroll line item, but this is based off of our -- it's a conservative number, based off of our experience on their vacancies the past several years. Here's where we stand with payroll-related considerations. We have a 2.5% pay raise and 1.5% COLA built into next year's budget at 3.1 million. New positions, reclasses, and other miscellaneous supplementals are included at a combined 1.5 million. Other miscellaneous includes $100,000 for police to offer relocation assistance to help with recruiting, and we've also budgeted a part-time pay increase for our year-round part-time employees and a medical premium increase that we'll discuss in more detail in a minute. So based on early estimates for our medical premiums, we projected a need to increase those premiums by 8% for FY24. Over the last couple of weeks, we've reevaluated those projections and believe we can instead increase by 4%, so reducing that recommendation by half. The charts shown here show you the budgeted increase and then our revised recommendation. If we go with the lower increase, the impact to the city's general fund would be a drop on the budgeted expenses by about $280,000. And since this does not go into effect until January, we will continue to monitor if any major fluctuations start happening in our claims, but at this point, we believe in our consultant, Lockton and Associates, is also comfortable with reducing this recommendation down. Are there any questions about that? If y'all agree with that, I would recommend that when the budget is -- when a motion is made to approve the budget, that it include reducing the premium increase as presented here.
So 8% are the figures in the budget?
8% is what's in the budget, but I think we can reduce that down to 4%. We would just need to amend the budget.
What was the adjustment last year?
So here's a summary of the priority 1 to 3 items excluding personnel priorities. These totaled to around $800,000 or about 10% of the supplemental requests. They're summarized on the graph, and some key highlights are shown here, including shooting range repairs of $184,000, additional police equipment of $105,000, and an additional park design of $100,000 for the Highway 96 property. So a little while ago, I mentioned items moving to the other capital sources fund. These are shown here, which is listed as your priority four items on your supplemental sheet. These are requests that have been moved out of general fund into the separate fund, and that would be funded from old grant interest revenues that built up over time for several years in that fund. And the recommended purchases include a bucket truck for traffic, a couple of trucks for -- one for fleet and one for engineering, and a video production and graphics system for communications. As I mentioned earlier, we have several projects that'll carry over to next year's budget from this year. Many of these carried forward from last year's budget to this year, so we'll pull these out of the unassigned fund balance so that we continue to match revenues and expenses each year. But you can see we've got Town Creek on this list, the general-funded portion of the West Park, the Skate Park, and several other projects listed here that we hope to complete in FY24. So our next steps would include the public hearing and first reading of the budget and tax rate ordinances at our 6 o'clock meeting, with second reading at the June 8th meeting. And the June 8th meeting would also include the budget resolutions for schools, water and stormwater, and the Community Investment Trust. And that's all I have. Do y'all have any questions on any of this?
What's a wayfinding study? It was listed about four slides ago for $50,000. What is that?
I believe either a March or April workshop, there was -- our consultant came in to discuss the downtown parking study results, and part of that discussion came out with requesting a wayfinding study to be included in our budget to assist visitors downtown with where various governmental buildings are, where parking is. I think there's a way to identify the parking garage structures, and Mr. Huddleston may be able to speak more to what all's included in that study.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want questions for specific departments now, or what would y'all recommend?
Sure. Any questions you have?
Any questions on the budget, sure.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions for specific departments? Anything that you'd like to see council to discuss? I got a one for Chief Bowen. The state has implemented a grant for a three-year bonus or sign-on bonus. Can you explain to us about that?
Yes, sir. So back in April, the state presented an opportunity for us to apply for grant funds for recruitment and retention, and there was also a second grant for cost sharing. So we applied for both of those grants through the state. The one that's got our focus right now is the recruitment and retention grant. And basically what it does, it sets up two categories of recruitment and retention bonuses. The first one would be for experienced officers, and what they define as experienced officer is anybody that is post-certified in the state of Tennessee or someone who has the equivalent certification in another state. The big key with the previous or the experienced officers is that you have to be between one and seven years of service. So individuals that fall between the zero and one-year range don't qualify for this grant. So for non-experienced, you would have to be either never certified as a law enforcement officer or outside of seven years. What it means in dollars is experienced, basically over a three-year period, you'd get $10,000 in bonuses that would be paid by the state to the city as reimbursement. And then for the non-certified, you would get over three years, you'd get $8,000 over that three-year period.
Do you have an idea what it would cost if we covered the portion that is not covered right now?
So just estimating on the experienced laterals that we'd get that would not qualify for one of these two definitions, we would be looking around 20 officers per year on average is what we would hire. So if you were looking between $2,000 to $3,000 for those bonuses, you'd be looking between $40,000 and $60,000.
Do you feel like there'd be a benefit if we did offer that?
Absolutely.
Or would it be -- we've talked about offering moving -- so would it be possible to word that to where we would do one or the other? So if somebody moved in as a police officer and they wanted to do the three-year grant or three-year sign-on, or they wanted to do moving expenses, if someone's moving from California, they could pick which one they wanted to do?
I think that would be a reasonable approach to it, because you might have some local people who don't have the moving expenses, but the bonus still might benefit us getting them recruited, and I think that that would be a good way to approach it.
Do I have any questions for Chief?
Relocation assistance, that's only 100K.
That's what's programmed into the budget right now.
So is there someone in your department that's going to be handling this?
So basically, what the state has set up for us is the CADIS is our training software. Basically, we enter the individuals into the CADIS system, and the state will track it and then make those -- those will be anniversary payments, and then we'll get those reimbursements at that time. So basically, it'll be tracked through our training software with the state.
And because we have not yet received an award that's not yet in the budget, but we can bring that back as a budget amendment once we get the details hammered out with the state?
Right. And staff has had conversations with the state as recently as this Tuesday maybe, and there's still some unknowns that are getting worked through on the state level, and we're just waiting to hear a response on some of that.
In my opinion, I think it's a small number that new people are coming in. We grant the same program to everyone. What's the total number that we're down on, not down, but how many officers do we have that we want to hire right now?
Okay, so right now, we just started a class Monday. We started off the year with 50-something shortages. We're now down to 32, and we've changed some of our approaches in hiring. It looks like hopefully over the next few months, we've got a couple of classes. We got another one planned in August, so hopefully we'll be in the 20-something range. So we're making some progress, and I think that some of the things that council has approved, such as cars, changing our take-home radius, things like that, I think those will help us, and I think additionally this will help as well.
A lot of our budget shortages, I almost say shortages, but savings that we have every year is slippage where we budget to hire people and we don't get to hire people. So I think, you know, we've never been able to fully be staffed.
Right.
At some point, maybe we would get to where we're overstaffed.
Right.
Trying to predict how many people retire, but I think anything we can do to promote people to come to the city would be, in law enforcement, would be a good start.
Right, right. And just while I'm up here, you know, I think one of the things that a lot of council has heard is about the compressed work schedule, and we're still working towards that, and we've started taking shift bids on that. So that's another, like I said, I think it's just a comprehensive piece that we have to put together, and I think that that would be another piece of the puzzle to hopefully help us with the retention.
Any other questions for Chief? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
My next group I had on the list, Bill, I hope this would be okay, but I was going to ask Director Duke to come up. There's been a lot of discussion over the last several months about shared city funds, so I thought it'd be good if you wouldn't mind briefing us. Mr. Tindall had sent us a slide that showed this year, the city taxpayer is going to be paying 12, 12.6 million out of our operating -- or out of our fund, general fund. Part of that's debt service and part of that is operating expenses, but I thought it would be good if you wouldn't mind explaining how that shared fund, how that's allocated.
Yeah, absolutely. So I will pull up -- let me find the right slide here. And I think the best way to kind of show it is to do it in coordination with, to walk through the slide up on the screen, and this is actually from the county's general purpose budget right now, and from this current year for FY23. So if you walk through this, you can see, you see it two lines. One is underlined in red, there's education and education capital projects. And if you look at the line above that, which is education, that is the amount of the property tax levy that goes to educating all the students in Rutherford County. That would be both the city and the county school system. So if you see at the first red arrow, the 22 certified tax rate, you can see it was .7627 going toward education, and underneath that, the capital projects was .04. And the reason that's important is because, of course, that money in the education category, not the education capital projects, is shared. So when you look at educating the students in Rutherford County, which would include both systems, if you follow that first education line out, you can see they moved seven pennies, the next arrow, from education to capital projects. So if you keep going all the way over, you see that for this current year, you're looking at $99,181,756 for education, and so that is what is split between the two districts. Sorry, did I go there? If you go, that would be the total for the current year we're in right now. If you see the line there where it says less city of $14,629,000, that is what comes to the city of Murfreesboro, is the property taxes are second highest revenue stream, because of course our city residents pay county taxes. And where does that $14 million come from? It comes from right here at the bottom where it breaks it out, and that is because we educate, as of last year, 14.75% of the total K-12 population in Rutherford County. So that's kindergarten all the way through high school, regardless of where they live, 14.75% of those come to the county city school system, so we get that proportional share. That is redone every year. We don't do that at the city, the county doesn't do that, the state does that based on attendance data, and then it's actually retroactively corrected. So this year, in April, we got a report that said we went from 14.7 to 14.6. That happens, sometimes we'll go to 14.9. So when they, this year, we went down to 14.6, they actually go back and retroactively adjust that to our entire payments for the entire year. So they adjust that at the end of the year and kind of take that money back, right? So it's per student, per attendance, split that way. I will tell you, you know, one of the conversations we had, and when I do my budget presentation, you'll see us talk about property and sales tax specifically. One of the things I will say is this change was made after we had approved our budget last year. So last year, before the movement of pennies, we were projecting about $16.4 million in property taxes. That's what we budgeted for. When the city schools made the recommendation, the county commission adopted to move those seven pennies to capital projects, that cost us about $1.5 million that we went back and cut in expenses and looked at. And the reason I say that is because when you move it to that capital projects line, that is not a shareable penny anymore. So at that point, that becomes 100% for the county school system, and the city schools for our capital projects do not have access to those money. So we looked just at that education line, and again, that split where it says less city, that is based on the students we serve directly, and again, it's adjusted on a yearly basis and then retroactively applied to that year if there's any changes. Happy to take any questions regarding that.
Does anyone have any questions? The reason I asked you to explain that is we've had discussion over the last couple of months about we're give, you know, the county gives us money. And I mean this because I think all, everyone will agree, a Murfreesboro City student is a county student as well, and if we didn't educate 14.7% of those students, the county would have to educate those 14.7 students. And so the $14 million that we get, I think we all would agree, looking at what the city schools, what it costs us to build a school, what our debt service is, and what our operating budget that we subsidize, it would cost the county a lot more to educate those 10,000 students or 14.7% than what we're -- it's not really a gift of money, it's pass-through money that comes with the student. So that's one of the questions I had. If we have a student that is at Salem Elementary, and that student decides that they don't want to go to Salem Elementary this year, and so next year they're going to go to Barfield, which is a county school inside the city, where does that money go?
That money follows that child, so that money goes with them. And you're exactly And you're exactly right, it's pass-through money. It's, we are educating fourteen point seven five percent of the students on their behalf and therefore we're getting that allocation of money. So as our enrollment changes, you know, this year, our growth was right at, was, was pretty even this year and that was pretty intentional on our part. We did some things with some of the zone waivers we had traditionally done in the past. We did some rezoning to help keep that growth as best as we could for this year. But you know, last year, last year we grew almost five percent in the city. And so as those new students come in, we get a bigger portion. This year we didn't grow as much, we get a smaller portion of that money.
I think we all had our budget discussions and we were all concerned to talk about a fifty million dollar school that would have to be built and what the revenue implications would be if we had to build that school. And, and so I think that's an overall discussion that over this next calendar year that many of us that have talked to you have discussed partnering with the county, whether it be on zonings, on how that our city schools and county schools have overlapping zoning. But ultimately, it's not a, a decision that we're gonna be able to rectify by arguing on who's educating what student. It's, we're all in, in it together. And so I think if any county commissioner or school board person is watching, I think the city of Murfreesboro is committed to doing whatever we can to partner with the county to make sure that not only the, the overall county is taken care of, but our city resident is taken care of as well.
Absolutely. And I will say, you know, regarding that comment around the, about the payment of, the gifting of the money or so on, I like to put it this way, the county is no more paying for the education of a student in the city than a family in Eagleville is paying for the education of a student in Laverne. Right? It's just, that's that money that's passing through. But I've had a, it's been nice working with Director Sullivan. Again, we've had some great conversations and, and I think we'll continue to move those forward.
Trey, thank you very much. Thank you for your hard work. Mr. Tindall, what do we have in our budget on employee raises? I think, just so everyone's on the same page, I know we talked about it.
Yeah, the total increase would be four percent and that's composed of.
Two and a half percent step and a one and a half percent cola.
Yeah.
Or two and a half percent raise, I should say also, for the open-range employees.
And we're estimating health costs, four percent too?
Correct. But that would not equal to the same amount off their paycheck. So they'll, they'll still see an increase on their paycheck. The overall increase to the, to their, let me see, I have that here. It'd be between a dollar eighty-three and eight dollars and twenty-seven cents a pay period, depending on which plan that they are signed up for.
If it was an eight percent, um, let me go back. If it was only four percent, could we absorb that entire cost where it's not hitting their paycheck?
That would change the whole structure of our plan, our, our benefits plan where the city pays eighty to eighty-three percent of the premium, depending on if you're in the PPO or HRA. It's not to say that we can't, but it would, I'm not sure what that impact would be overall on, on our plan and if that affects OPEB or anything else, but.
I'm just asking, I mean, the cola, I guess technically covers that.
The, the payments to, the increases to payroll would more than cover the increase to the health insurance premium. Because four percent, even if you're on the lower end of the salary of, say, thirty-five thousand on an annual salary, four percent of that will be much higher than four percent on, yeah, a couple hundred bucks.
Okay.
It's, it's four percent, but it's not four percent of the same number.
Same number.
Yes, four percent of the salary is the increase and four percent of what you pay for insurance is the increase. So it's a much smaller increase than the salary increase.
Initially in the budget, it was eight percent, right? And we're, we're saying we can probably do four. What, what, what happens if that expense turns closer to eight than to four?
We would just dip into our fund balance and the insurance fund. So we do have, we do have a fund balance to help supplement that. We do need to keep a certain amount within that to cover claims as they come in, since our premiums come in on a monthly basis. And, you know, we can have maybe a large claim expense come in in January, but lower in February and March. So we do need to keep a certain set amount of fund balance in that insurance fund. But we have enough that if, if we had to dip into it, we could. And if that started to get dangerously low, which that's something we discussed last year when claims were really skyrocketing for us and we had to implement that high increase, we also budgeted in general fund to transfer a million dollars from general fund as a one-time transfer to insurance fund if that was needed. Fortunately, it wasn't needed this year. But if something like that happened again, I would probably come back and recommend maybe for us to supplement that insurance fund through general fund to, to keep it at a stable balance.
So the employee wouldn't be affected as far as.
Not if we didn't, not if we just didn't, basically an infusion from general fund to insurance fund. That, that would not impact the employee now.
Right.
They would pay the same rate. So council, recall that we did an adjustment to assist in increases. One of the biggest increases we were seeing were, was in prescriptions. And so we, we made.
Changed that.
We, we made some changes in that and so that's, that's helpful. But of course, we're, we're always looking, our consultants are always coming in with ideas on how we can best manage our healthcare costs. We are self-funded, so, you know, the city contributes into a fund that pays all the insurance claims that comes in. It's administered by Blue Cross and Blue Shield, that's just why employees carry a Blue Cross, Blue Shield card, but it's city funds though. City and, it's city and employees through the premiums.
So with the increases that we are giving for the salaries, if a disaster was to happen, do we still have six months of funds where we could go on and the city could go on with everything we pay monthly? Do we have about six months in revenue?
In general fund?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, with our fund balance would, I mean, if everything wiped out, I'm not, you know, but I wouldn't expect everything to wipe out. But if we had a significant drop in sales tax, for example, and development revenues, I believe our fund balance could, could supplement that to get us through the year, along with spending cuts and hiring freezes if needed.
So Dave Ramsey would be happy?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Our emergency phone is in place. Probably not with the dad.
We are blessed city to be able to, it's not enough, but to be able to give our employees, I say a token of thank you, you know, for everything they do because we have the best employees and a lot of cities cannot brag about that, you know? We do a lot of things wrong, some things that are not well-liked, but when it comes to our employees, I'm proud of what we do for the employees because they, they do an excellent job.
Austin, do you have a question?
Yeah, it's, it's more of a parks and recreation question. Aaron, I'll, I'll start with you. So I'm going back to the old sheet, we met one-on-one and had, you know, I want to say five positions in there on that sheet. Program Coordinator Athletics, Groundskeeper, Support Specialist, Head Tennis Pro and Facility Coordinator Special Permit. And then, of course, later on tonight, during the council meeting, there's a funded position count sheet and it shows going from a hundred to a hundred and five. Well, on the new sheet that's in front of everybody, what I'm looking at is from a position. I see a Head Tennis Professional, Priority Three, Program Coordinator Athletics, Priority Three, a Support Specialist, and that's probably a band increase, and then a Groundskeeper times two. And that seems like a band increase. So is it, I'm trying to figure out, is it five physical positions? Because I'm, I'm, I'm looking at five, but it looks like a couple of them are, are basically bands, like a Support Specialist and the Groundskeeper, maybe.
So they, there is five increases. The, it is five increases to the head count for parks.
Five physical people.
Right, but with the two full-time groundskeepers, they gave up five part-time groundskeepers. So that net impact to the budget was only about fifteen thousand.
Shows three, they gave up five?
That was at three.
It's three, went from three oh four to three oh one, part-time.
Yeah, my, my sheets show that they, I'm not sure where Nate is. My sheets show that, no, there is.
Maybe two of the part-time.
That they dropped, that they were dropping five part-time. They did drop a part-time Support Specialist as well.
And then the original Facility Coordinator Special Permits, is that still in there or, or no? Because I don't see that on the sheet now, the new sheet.
That was actually done this year with a budget amendment in, in May, I believe. We adjusted, we went ahead and funded that position in this fiscal year because of the need there, instead of it carrying forward to the budget.
Okay, so that's already taken.
It is in, it's just not, it's already in FY twenty-three.
Okay.
It is five positions, five part-time groundskeeper positions.
Five part-time groundspeople are, are going away?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then adding the two.
Two full-time.
They're, they were having a hard time hiring.
Net is three.
So I think the difficulty was in hiring part-time groundskeepers and they were having better luck hiring full-time with benefits. And so, but making those full-time and reducing the part-time keeps the coverage the same.
The coverage is the same and those positions have remained chronically empty, we can't fill those. So we think the full-time positions will come on board and be something that's desirable.
We did a similar swap last year and so I think that was successful and, which is what drove them to request that again this year.
Okay. It was just, I guess, the, the sheet for later on in council, it, it doesn't match up with this sheet. That's what I was getting at, that's what I was trying to figure out. But you're saying one of those is already taken care of from a, a budget amendment?
Yeah, the, the position, the, the information that we covered in our one-on-ones earlier, some of that information has changed when it got to the final iteration in the budget, you're right.
Can we get a, Nate, can we get, in our budget, we have, I think, a, an existing budget we already have for West Park plus we have additional, what is our timing on West Park?
I think Mr. Huddleston might be able to answer that. He's really kind of, him and the Development Services team are leading that effort. So as far as timeline, he's taking the lead on that one.
Afternoon, mayors, members of the council. So we have a consultant, a top consultant, we've got a proposal in from them for the initial master planning and design. We're working through that with staff. We expect to have that on a council budget in the very near future. Perhaps would be in the, one of the June meetings. And that will allow us to get started with design. We're still targeting, starting some groundwork in the, on the ground this fall.
Okay. So we feel like we will have West Park under construction this year. I don't want to feel like Charlie Brown going to kick the football and y'all are Lucy and y'all pull it out again, you know? So, because we've talked about West Park for, you know, quite some times. I don't even like putting a date out there until we literally have a groundbreaking and we're holding the shovel. But do we, we feel like that we can be under construction this year?
Yes, some of the initial infrastructure, because we've got to get some roads and sewer in to serve some of those facilities. And at this point, it looks like we would start on the east part, which is next overall creek. Sewer's there and then work toward the middle part of the site for access and utilities.
Nate, what about Highway ninety-six?
So, so you'll guarantee that he'll have a shovel in his hand by the end of the year?
We, we will have, not he, we, we.
More than one shovel.
Nate says.
Yeah, yeah.
More than one shovel.
I think Sam might need to stay up here as far as question ninety-six specifically. I think there's some money allocated to start doing some studying of what could go there.
Yeah, so we are, we'd anticipate using the same consultant, since we would have them under contract, we're doing a, a task order for them and really refresh the, the master planning work that was done there. Most recently, again, we, we have surveying information, just technical information and some, some other data that, that we already have on that project. We, we spent a good bit of time on master planning and I think our Parks and Rec staff, working with the mayor and council, we'd be able to pick the amenities and the elements that would be in that and then work on that concept plan with, with the consultant we have.
Okay.
If there's any other questions, I can pass off to Sam, I'd be glad to.
Council members, I'm, I'm only, I'm only one vote, but, you know, we, we talked about West Park all the way going back to two thousand sixteen. So we're now getting that started, but we've not built additional ballfields since the mid nineteen nineties. And our population, our population in nineteen ninety-two was forty thousand residents and we're now at a hundred and sixty-plus or close to that. So at some point, we're gonna have to have the discussion about additional athletic facilities that, besides McKnight Park and Barfield, because those are at, at max capacity right now. I think that also brings up another discussion that, and I'm not saying we have to have this discussion today, but, you know, at some point, we're gonna have to talk about outside use of those fields during the week with teams that don't have fields, you know, at different high schools. And that really piggybacks to Highway ninety-six, that if we, as we go through the design and we talk about an aquatics facility or two sheets of ice that we get the Preds Foundation hopefully to help with, you know, as more high schools are being built and more high schools have swim teams. And then every year, the city has looked to provide an aquatics facility. Hopefully, there may could be a partnership with the county to talk about aquatics facility or something to be able to have that ability. Right now, I think there's three high schools in the county that have swim facilities, Oakland, Riverdale and Laverne.
Yep.
And I think it's, it's my understanding that those things have gotten to be so expensive to maintain over the last forty, fifty years.
Fifty years old.
Yeah, that we're gonna have to, you know, maybe it's a discussion that those high schools, if they're gonna have teams pay into the maintenance every year of a facility where we have the ability to be able to manage that. But, you know, that Highway ninety-six property has some, I think, greater use to be able to have some of those, those discussions.
We have the benefit, the planning that went into that property when we originally looked at it, we have a lot of geotechnical, a lot of grading, we've got surveys. It also shows where we can put ballfields there if we do, with some of the constraints of the property. So it would be beneficial, I think, once we incorporate that with that master plan as a task order, I think we'll have some really good stuff to work with.
Okay.
I, I had another idea about ballfields as well. We, we have ballfields at almost every one of our schools. I talked to Nate and Trey both about this, is what would it take to make those ballfields usable ballfields? We already have them on, on, on site. So that kind of, you could kind of use the ballfields to build community between the areas of town. You'd put those on the syst, on the system, so you no longer would have, you could add fourteen. You'd put those on the system, so you no longer would have, you could add 14 ball fields to what we're saying we're net negative right now. So just throwing that out there.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, we're at it, we're at Buchanan Elementary every Wednesday night at, from five to seven, and under the team that Drew plays on, we pay, I'm not sure who we pay, but we pay someone to use that field every week. And I don't know if that is used for maintenance or whatever, but I think there is the ability to be able, we may not be able to use them for games, but to be able to have open space where people could actually get out. I mean, Segal Elementary and the front of Segal Elementary and the back of Segal Elementary have backstops there. They're just completely overgrown where people could use them for fields. So, you know, maybe Bill knows this, when season starts at McKnight Park in sports com, there is no practice. I mean, it's just games. So maybe there's the ability to find open space where people can get out there.
There's probably a lot of hundred different solutions that we could come up with. The problem with the schools, and I think Trey would mention this, is, you know, that was, in my younger days, I remember playing on the field after school. But now with some of the after-school programs that are provided at the schools, the security that's required to be around the school, playing on a school field is not necessarily, a lot of our after-school programs are actually using those fields sometimes. So the issue is, I mean, how you coordinate all that, it's a little bit hard. Because I remember, we used to have tennis courts on elementary school fields, at elementary schools too, that we used to go over there. And when, it might be more practical to use that, you'd need to light the fields, and then that's another expense. So, I mean, it's good to have the discussion, and I'm glad to see we're trying to brainstorm some creative solutions to provide services, additional services to our public. But, you know, yeah, we need more fields, and there's always, in a town like ours, we're going to always have kind of a little bit behind the curve.
We, I agree with the discussion. We need more fields. I mean, we've got a facility sitting there, the old YMCA, which everybody says, well, it's a bad location. But there's a traffic light there. I mean, I don't think you're ever going to have a perfect location, but there is facilities and fields. So whatever that comprehensive look is, we need to take a look at it. Whether it's the Y, or I'll use Black Fox Elementary, where I used to coach youth league football. It's a big field out there that perhaps you could do something with it. Where you've got tennis courts at, I think that's at Bellwood?
Most of the old school.
Yeah. They've got tennis courts. I don't know if kids are out there playing tennis, but there's a lot of people playing pickleball now. That's the big hot thing. I think Jamie plays pickleball, she just won't admit it.
I don't play sports.
Maybe, this would not be for budget, but, you know, maybe based on what Sean has said and Austin has said, over the next couple of months, maybe at a workshop, let's inventory what assets we do have on city property that, you know, possibly could be used for different uses. West Park may be one of those. I've not seen what the design or what's recommended for West Park. I know more of open field space has been talked about to be able to have, you know, there are people, for example, Segal Park in the detention pond out there, there's two backstops in the detention pond where we would go practice whenever we could find an open time to go out there. But, you know, maybe there's some assets that we inventory those, that we can tell people, hey, these are, the ability that you can reserve those. We may already have that.
Dr. Duke and I have discussed this some, and I think there's some opportunities there. Of course, there are some constraints with usage, but nothing that we can't overcome. So we'd be glad to look into what that might look like. But as far as enhancements, improvements, and then maintaining would take a certain level of, you know, staff time that we can evaluate as well. But lighting would be something that would make it really critical to be able to maximize the usage on any type of field like that.
Well, I mean, during baseball season, five to 7:30, eight o'clock, you're still pretty good, pretty good shape. We're not going to be able to go out during fall ball and practice with it getting dark. But, you know, I do think it doesn't have to be pristine infield, it could just be a field where people could get out.
Let me ask a question about the, and this is not necessarily budget-related, but since you raised the question about how we're, I guess, planning the West Park, the use of that property, how are we, what are we giving the consultant to come up with a plan? How are we communicating what our wants are?
Great question.
So when we proposed the zoning pattern for that, we met individually with each of you and talked about some of our broader city needs as well as the park needs. Public safety was identified as a portion. There are some portions along Veterans Parkway that are probably not suitable for ball fields per se, and then there's a portion in the middle of the site that we had set aside for a potential school site and some other community needs, perhaps a library or technology center. Leaving a balance of about 100 acres there to plan and program for the park elements proper, and those obviously can be integrated within the total development of the site. It doesn't have to be exclusive that, you know, you go from a boundary and it's park or it's school, especially things like walking trails and some of the open space would be, it would be an integrated project is how we see it coming across, and would have multiple community and public facilities there.
Just to supplement that, I think in a workshop upcoming, now that we have the engineer on board and starting, and when they get some geotechnical and some boundaries and figure out all those different kind of aspects of what could possibly a park look like, then we'll come back to council and have the discussion as what might fit in there, what might be a good supplement down the road, just a mile away into the 96 property that's been mentioned. And so that'll be forthcoming.
Yeah, that was my recommendation to have a presentation at one of our workshops so that we could have an opportunity to have input to that, you know, with the consultant once you brought them on board. Is it out for bid or RP or what?
So we did a request for qualifications for planning and design consultants that would have the capability and background in parks, but also master planning the property for access and utilities. And through that process, we shortlisted two, we interviewed, and we've picked one, and now we're negotiating scope and contract with them. And this would be a full-range consultant that could do the utilities and traffic and grading and drainage, as well as the park elements and other, quite honestly, other community elements, have architectural capabilities as well as traditional sort of civil and land planning capabilities, surveying. And the other thing that our Parks and Rec staff, you know, they've, have done a good job, I think, with keeping a handle on our needs, if I could say it that way, through some of the public engagement we had on the Blackman Park before, the update to their parks master plan, the updates we're looking at, the greenway, blueway, blackway master plan. And so I think our city staff and our Parks and Rec staff have a really good handle on the facilities we have and the gaps between, say, some of the program benchmarking that we see from the parks organizations and other similar communities. And so we can't do all those at Blackman Park, nor could we do all of those at West Park, but between the two, and then with some of the other activities that we have going on, we feel like we can put a pretty good dent into some of the park needs we have in our community.
Thank you. Any questions on, all right, we'll have another couple of discussions on the budget. So, of course, we have our upcoming agenda, but Jamie, you and Austin are new for the process. Anything that you want to bring up along the way or, you know, after the meetings with Aaron or Craig, you know, you can do that, so.
I'm glad we had the discussion. I think the biggest thing is kind of long-term. We've got that master plan, but, you know, what do we want our master plan for parks and rec and pools and tennis courts and golf and everything? Because I personally think we're probably a little behind just because of the growth, and probably need several more just to catch up. And that's not Parks and Rec's fault, I just, we've just grown so fast.
Yeah, we, you know, the tough part, we can't blame Trey, but, you know, right when West Park was being discussed, we ended up building Salem Elementary, and that was after overall, and the school went from 20 million to 40 million. And then we had a tax increase in 2018, so it makes it tough to announce to build a big park when you've got all of that going on, so.
And in the future, I would like to see, my time is winding down, of course, on the council, it may not be in my turn, but I would like to see the city do something for the homeless, some kind of facility or, you know, do a study on that. Because as the population is growing, so is the homeless. So that's just something I'd like for us to put in our minds to look at.
You know, Madeline, the good news with that, this will be the first year with the community investment group that, that's a discussion that, it's a good discussion. So, all right. Any other business from staff, council? All right, we have a, Adam, for an E session, do I need to just?
We still need to do the water and city school budget presentation.
I'm sorry.
Water, stormwater.
Sorry.
I was trying to do everything I possibly could. Just skip Darren.
To answer your question, I think if you just announce it, you're fine.
Okay, all right. All right, so, let's be quick, Darren.
We have a Cliff Notes version of our point.
No pressure. We have a balanced budget of $59,718,000. Any questions?
Those of y'all that don't remember Ken Honeycutt, Ken Honeycutt was our fire marshal, or deputy fire marshal, right? And he came up to present for one of his first times, and he literally walked up and said, "Any questions?" Do y'all have any questions? We've all looked over the water and sewer budget. Any questions for Darren? Okay, thanks Darren.
Thank you.
That's a record.
All right, we have stormwater as well.
I'm back.
Yeah, make it just as quick.
We have a balanced $3.95 million stormwater budget as well. Revenues equalling expenses. Happy to answer any questions.
You've got all the expenses that are detailed in the projects that you're planning on doing next year.
Got the CIPs, the, all the cash-funded CIP in the budget, and what we're trying to do over the next five years for both water resources and stormwater, so.
Any questions for Darren?
No questions.
All right, we'll move to Murfreesboro City Schools. Trey.
No pressure. Man. We'll go real fast, and if I need to recover anything, I will. I'm going to go through this very quickly, just so you have it. This is our projection for next year. We're looking at a growth of about four, 230 students, about two and a half percent, which is normal, to take us up to a total enrollment of about 9,609 students. Let me go back, I apologize. 9,609 students we're looking at for next year. That two and a half percent is pretty consistent with what we typically see, last two years not taken into consideration. We are looking at a cost of living increase of about 4% for our staff. The last two years, we've done a 3% increase. Each percent cost us about $800,000, so that's about $3.2 million in our budget. But with our step increases on our salary scale, that's right at 5.26%. Some revenue highlights for us, we are looking at an increase of about $5.4 million or a 10% increase in revenues. That is completely from the new state funding model. TESABEP is going away. The state is giving us, the new funding model gives us about $5.4 million more. As I briefly mentioned with us before, local tax or local funds is very different. For a second year in a row, we are budgeting maintenance of effort for property tax, and then for the first year, we are budgeting maintenance of effort for our sales tax. So that obviously is a pretty big hit on our budget, which typically we look at increasing in both of those. So overall, we got about 5.6% increase in our projected revenues. Here you can see in our budget for our maintenance of effort and for our new council members, just to make sure everyone is aware, maintenance of effort for us means once we budget in local money, we can never budget less than that. So when we, if you look here at the local option sales tax, we're actually projecting to bring in 16.4, but we're keeping our budget at 14.3, so that if there is any kind of downturn, we make sure we meet the local requirements. So we typically have historically budgeted more in both of those. This year, last year, like I said, with property tax, we budgeted, we took it down to 15 million after the property tax move, and then we're leaving sales tax where it is. So our revenues all come from the increase there. I do want to talk just briefly about school security. The state school security grant went away. Our budget includes about half a million dollars for school security expenditures. In addition, the governor just passed 140 million for school resource officers, 40 million for public security upgrades, and 8 million for mental health behavior liaisons. Of those three, the only one that will come to the school system is that middle one, 40 million for public school upgrades. The 100 million for, 40 million for the school resource officer grant will go directly to the police department. They will apply for that grant, and currently we're being told that's about 75,000 per school resource officer that they'll have access to. And the 8 million for school-based behavior liaisons goes to agencies. So overall, our GP budget, you can see 100 million in revenue, 104 million in expenditures, 5.6% increase in revenues, 5.7% increase in expenditures, pulling 3.8 out of fund balance. And again, for our new council members, you can see we have historically budgeted out of fund balance, and we historically always add to fund balance, partly because we budget our local revenues so tightly to keep maintenance of effort from extending too much. So if you look last year, or this current year, 3.5 million to fund balance, that 5.6 projection that we'll add is very conservative. I feel it'll be well over a million. If you look at last year, we actually added over $7 million to our fund balance, which was a goal I had coming in a few years ago. So you can see we're sitting at a total fund balance of a little over 19 million, 15 million of that unassigned. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have or more detail. I have lots of slides, so whatever you want, I'll try and pull it up.
Three to four slides. Previously, you said you anticipate additional shifting of pennies from the county. In other words?
Yes, so last year, they moved the seven cents off the property tax. It's our understanding they will most likely move more off of the property tax again this year, which again, will increase that amount we have. So we're budgeted at 15 million, which is what we've been the last two years, we're not increasing that. Luckily, sales tax revenue, because we also budget that so conservatively, typically makes up for that. So as long as we think about our maintenance of effort, that 31 million that we budgeted last year, it's total local, that's the least amount we can budget. So again, if there's a further decrease in property tax, our hope is, and our plan is, you can see, we would most likely make that up in sales tax, because we budget that very conservatively too.
Thank you.
Is the governor's proposed increase in teachers' salaries, is that in this budget or?
So we are already paying above the state minimum. So the state minimum is $42,000. Next year, our starting salary will be 48,000. So we do get some funds for that, but we are already paying, as most metropolitan areas in middle Tennessee, we are paying more. The districts that are paying the basic state minimum are usually more rural districts that don't have the income from the tax revenue.
Okay. And none of that affects the maintenance of effort because it's state funds?
That's all state funding.
Okay. Go ahead.
No, no, go on.
Well, I just want to say, I get to sit through this whole process that the school board goes through, and it is just, I just want to compliment you and your staff and the school board. They, this, and I know all the departments do this. They, this, and I know all the departments do this, but I got, you know, I get a chance to see this, the sausage being made sometimes, and it is, it is truly the commitment that Dr. Duke, you and your staff and, and the school board itself puts through to, to create a budget for city schools is, is, is a remarkable process to watch. People who care about public education and try to do it as economically as they can. You need to be, you really need to be complimented for the work that you do and your staff does. You've got a great staff and, and good people on the school board too, and I, it's, it's encouraging to watch that process happen.
Thanks, great team.
I did tell that. My question is, roughly how many teachers, principals, et cetera, are you losing to retirement or teachers just quitting, or do you have sufficient people that you can reach out to hopefully to fill those slots?
Yeah, so we have, I think we had sixteen maybe retire this year, and we have our positions filled as of now. Obviously, teacher shortage is something everyone's dealing with that we're always looking for. The state has just passed a new law that has furthered, broadened the ability of retired teachers to come back. So this past year, we had several retired teachers who are able to come back, make, get paid and draw seventy percent retirement, and they've kinda broadened that even more for the upcoming year, so we tap into our retired teachers quite a bit who are willing to come back to fill those needs.
Because I was looking, I may have this confused on the news about Nashville putting assistants as teachers or trying to do that, I just didn't know if we were heading down that road. Are we okay?
We, we do use permits and waivers as needed for people that qualify. If they, for instance, have a degree in another field, a four-year degree, we can give them a waiver to come in and teach as long as that's monitored, and we've actually had a lot of success. We usually use our educational assistants for that. We have quite a few educational assistants who may have a degree in business but have been working in the schools as an educational assistant for the last three or four years, and a lot of times, we'll put them on a permit to go in and let them teach. We have a great partnership with MTSU. We went to MTSU last year and asked them to help us create a program specifically to help get those individuals licensed, and we're launching that in the summer, and we appreciate our partnership with MTSU, because they're very good to work with us on things like that.
Okay, my last question. How did our third graders do in testing?
So our third graders, we're really proud. We continue for the second year in a row to see an increase in our third grade scores. Literacy's been a huge focus for us. This year alone, we've had multiple outside groups coming to our schools to observe. We hosted right at forty commissioners and assistant commissioners of education from across the country who came here for a national conference, went to Black Fox, spent the day at Black Fox in Hobgood. We had a group from Georgetown University come in. A few weeks ago, they're writing, the think tank, Future Ed, came in to write some articles about how we're training teachers on literacy. So we are glad to see another increase. As of today, with the retakes, eighty-one percent of our third graders are eligible for promotion either through an exemption, through an appeal, or through the proficiency ban.
Awesome. Great job, great job.
One more thing, it made me think of something. There was a report on the summer school, and it was over a thousand students or something that we've already enrolled in, in summer school, so it's remarkable, and fully staffed, right?
Fully staffed.
Fully staffed summer school of over a thousand students. It's remarkable what is done, and it, and, and the teachers willing to offer themselves for the good of those students for that summer school. It's just a remarkable puzzle that came together rather quickly, and just to be commended. Thank you for the work.
Thank you.
I apologize, one more question. I know we have a program that, you know, kids can take food home on the weekend and things like that. Now, for the summer, how are these kids possibly gonna get fed who don't have the food?
So we have our summer feeding program, we just put the schedule out today. We feed all across the city, not only at our school, so all of our summer sites, summer school sites will have breakfast and lunch. We also have our chow bus that goes to apartment complexes and goes to different McFadden, the center at McFadden, Patterson Park, it goes all throughout the city delivering food all summer long. So that schedule's online, it got put out today, but we have lots of locations all over the city that you can go and get food at.
Great, because I was worried about those kids, you know, who take food home on the weekends, what would they do? Great job, thank you.
Trey, I wanna compliment you and your finance team for the transparency that brought over the last, this is your second budget, correct, or third?
Well, I don't count the first one, because I started in March and, you know, we didn't really know where it was. This is the second full-year budget, I'll say that.
Well, I think, I think staff would appreciate, or appreciates the transparency as well. It's the most transparent that I've seen when we're walking, working through and talking about budgeting, and that brings a level of comfort to the council that we know the information we're getting is accurate and you're not asking for something unless you, you need it. And so we, we appreciate that.
Well, we appreciate, and I'll speak for Kim, our finance director, for Aaron and the entire finance staff, they have been an incredible resource to us, all the way down to purchasing, so it's been a great partnership, and I think that's been a big piece of it as well.
Okay. All right, councilmembers, that's the last, yes, sir?
If I could, I wanna echo from a staff standpoint, Director Duke and his staff for, for preparing the budget. You're right, you're absolutely right. It, it has been very good over the last two years, I'll say. Won't take credit for the third, and Darren for his gravity, appreciate that. But everyone out here has worked very hard, everyone out here has worked very hard on the, on the budget this year, particularly the finance staff, Amanda, Jennifer, and Aaron, and Aaron's had some difficulties outside the city that she's hung in there through the budget process, which is very demanding, and, and very much appreciate all that work.
Everyone that's sitting in the audience, we don't have time to have you, each of you come up, that's the way budget hearings used to go.
Oh, yeah.
We would be here for eight hours going over the budget.
Yeah.
But I want y'all to know, on behalf of, of our entire team that's sitting up here, the work that you put in, not just you, but what your, your team that's out every single day, we appreciate what, what y'all are doing, and the resident, I know appreciates it. So thank y'all for, for being here and working so hard. All right. Seeing no other business, we'll stand adjourned, and then we do have to announce we have an executive session right now.